Regular City Council Meeting of June 5th, 2023. To order, let's please rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and here in place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
As President, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Goschek. Any discussion?
Council President, do we need to amend that agenda to include number four?
Oh, that's right. Yep, sorry about that. Okay, so hang on to that just one second, guys. If you look at a new business, Section A, we need to add number four, park maintenance worker, post the position.
And then, and Council President, you might want to just ensure, because it's not on the posted agenda, the item six under lettings, the Fifth Avenue paving.
Fifth Avenue paving, Knife River North Central. Do you award that?
And then we are, yeah, and we're modifying the recommendation for award under number four on lettings to include contingent upon city attorney and city administrator review.
Okay, so we want to add that contingent on city attorney and city administrator. Financial?
I'll make a motion to approve with those additions.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Goschek. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes, special work session meeting of May 15th, the regular meeting of May 15th, 2023, and the close meeting of May 15th, 2023, approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Approval of bills, checks 108864 through 108945 totaling $505,530.23, approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljigrin, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Award, turnout gear grant award, community impact funding Sourcewell. Fire, accept. Fire chief.
I need to read the word that was on there. Apparently we are getting the award for the Sourcewell grant. They have voted on it at the June meeting yet. Actually, I believe it was the third Tuesday it was voted on.
Correct.
So it'll be finalized then.
Right, there will, we have not, the board has not turned down recommendations since I've been on the board, and I think there was like 24 different awards totaling $1 million that Sourcewell is giving to communities.
Yeah, it'll definitely be a benefit to the city and to the surrounding area with the townships. It'll help the equipment fund, so.
Good.
That'll fund the end set of turnout gear for the new firefighters. And then I'll probably be coming to the next meeting to ask for approval to purchase four additional sets for the remaining firefighters from the last group of hires.
This was a lottery, wasn't it?
It was a lottery. I can't remember where I did it.
The computer just spun it and.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, well, it's so hard when we had 50 applications and to try to pick through them and be perfect is a little tough.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Consent agenda. Fire report, May 2023, approve. On sale, on sale Sunday, and off sale liquor licenses. Kerry Belchinger, Gorka, DBA Kerry's Bar LLC, approve. Temporary sidewalk sale promotion, the shops at Little Falls, June 15th through the 17th, 2023, approve. What is the wish of the council?
As President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion?
Is this the smallest consent agenda we've ever had?
I think so.
And I'm surprised too, because we had that extra week off. Okay, that's it.
Smallest I've seen in 14 years.
The rest of the agenda is.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Public hearings and lettings, lettings. Appliances, bulk garbage, electronics, and tires. Bob Lemire roll-offs refused and recycling, Inc. Award. Hannah.
Thank you, Council President. So the city called for quotes for bulk garbage collection for one and two family residential properties. We received two quotations, one from Bob Lemire for $9,417 and one from City Sanitary Service for $9,852.50. Residents will be required to sign up for the collection and the collection date will be July 28th through 20, and 29th, 2023. So we are requesting that the council awards a little quotation for appliances, bulk garbage, and all the other pickups to Bob Lemire for $9,417.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion, give it to Bob Lemire.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljigrin, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Surface improvements to 18th Street Northeast, Knife River North Central. Award. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. On May 17th, we opened bids for the 18th Street Northeast project. We are looking at reclaim, or excuse me, doing an overlay on that portion between Drunk Highway 27 and just north of Walmart, as well as doing a paved trail to the east side of that stretch of it as well. The loan bid came from Knife River North Central in the amount of $855,343.70. The engineer's estimate was $971,000, $953.75, so quite a bit less than what our estimate was. Roughly $340,000 is going to be coming from DNR, from the Camper of the Veterans Day Trail portion. The remainder of the funds would come from our state aid account for the street portion of the project. So we are asking the council to award the project to Knife River North Central in the amount of $855,343.70, and that would be contingent upon the funding agency approvals.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award it to Knife River.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Meyer, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Council President?
Yes.
I know that we have had a lot of issues with traffic on that stretch. What's this going to do to traffic having now ATVs going through? Are we going to make some modifications to what we're doing there?
So the ATVs would be on the east side of it. It'll be separated from the road itself. There will not be a connection on the south or the north, but that is where the designated ATV portion of the trail, the Camper of the Trail, would come. All the way from the south of Little Falls along 18th Street where the new 18th Street would be going in the future, and then up through this segment. And so because we were doing the road portion of it, it made sense, just because of economy of scale and economy of work, to do that portion of the trail at this point in time as well. I see those as two separated items, just because the one will be essentially in the boulevard area, and then the traffic will still be on the traffic. We are also doing pedestrian improvements along that stretch. If you recall, over by Aldi's, there were some requests from residents to provide a safer crossing, and so those improvements are included in this project as well.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just, I know on the, on the west side of that road, I'm just wondering if you can look into if it makes any sense to, I don't know if it's possible, shift the lines a little bit. So the, the, when you're heading south, that right lane, I noticed in the winter, basically you can't drive on it. I mean, it's half covered in.
Snow.
Snow. I'm just wondering if, you know, tighten up the turn lane a little bit, ship, I mean, just shift that over, just, you know.
We could look at it.
I mean, well, you're the engineer, so that's why I'm asking you.
We could look at it.
I don't have the answers. And, because you did talk about prohibiting a left turn on the block prior to the Walmart entrance at one point, I believe, right?
Yes.
So are you going to look at doing that at the same time, or is that just a separate project?
So there is a new development that's looking at coming in on that corner, and the left turn into that would be prohibited. So it would be right in and right out to that development, but Third Avenue would still be a full access intersection there.
Okay.
That's the one going east-west over to Country and Suites.
Yeah, don't we have a problem with cars cutting over too quick now?
Yes, so that, the median will be extended so that that is prohibited. You're right, so if people are coming north on 18th Street, they kick into their early and then go right through.
That was my question.
Yep.
You know, that, and then make sure the lines of travel have my right set of wheels going over a manhole cover.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
I think it was briefly mentioned, I guess, Mr. Council President, I think it was briefly discussed, are they thinking, looking at doing a roundabout where that stoplight is? Is that not an option, or?
We are in the process of reviewing what would be the right intersection at that location. MINDOT is looking at doing improvements along that stretch in 2028 or 2029 right now. And so we are working, we've worked with Bolton and Mink in terms of what would be the right intersection layout for that in conjunction with MINDOT. So that's in the works right now.
Okay.
But that's a MINDOT thing?
In MINDOT and city, yeah.
Yeah, part, Council President, as you were a part of those meetings earlier this year, I think even last fall, the alternatives that we're looking at, we're promoting exploring all options for that versus, you know, what we tend to see with MINDOT, if we don't ever say or get in the queue early enough.
Yeah.
They just develop their plan based on their standards and don't look at the other alternatives. So that's why we want to get in early enough to make sure that export everything.
Correct.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moisture monitoring equipment, Rangers Golf Awards. John.
Thank you, Council President. I didn't, I apologize for not getting a memo about this earlier. Kind of came up late last week. Talked to Ethan, and he's worked with this equipment before, just, you know, it's only a $1,500 item, but wanted to just make sure that you're aware of what he was using it for. But if you recall, a few years ago, we had a significant problem with our greens. They developed a fungus that was related to having too much moisture on there. So this is a device that Ethan said he'd be using two, three times a day, continually checking on the moisture content on the greens, making sure that it connect, you know, he's keeping that in sync with the irrigation and systems that we have to get the right amount of water applied. So I think it will be a valuable investment for operations out there.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Meyer, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Finance and personal software, BSNA Software, Inc. Award, contingent on city attorney and city administrator review. Hannah.
Thank you, Council President. So as discussed in the work session, staff is recommending moving forward with a software conversion with BSNA. This memo right now is just for that conversion cost. The next item will be for the time and attendance cost. So $34,340 would come out of 2023 using ERPA funds. The rest would be budgeted in 2024 and 2025 respectively. So we are requesting that you award the little bit of the $103,875, $103,875 from BSNA, and also contingent upon city attorney and city administrator review.
What is the wish of the council?
As President, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Time and attendance, software conversion, Andrews Technology and Interface, Tyler Technologies, Award. Hannah.
Thank you, Council President. So in addition to the software, there is a time and attendance interface with our current system, Tyler Technologies, that they would be able to interface prior to going live with the new software. So we are requesting, awarding the quotation of $14,435 from Andrews Technology, as well as the $2,245 for the interface with our current system. Once we are up and running with the new software, this will integrate with the new software.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award the time and attendance, software conversion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Meyer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Fifth Avenue paving, Knife River North Central, Award. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're talking about Fifth Avenue Southeast, which runs from, is a gravel street from Lemire Street all the way over to 160th Avenue on the southeast part of town. The first two blocks are within the city limits, so the city of Little Falls is the road authority on it. The remainder of that stretch is a township road, and so the township is in charge of that. I learned that the township is looking at paving that stretch this year, actually on Wednesday, they're looking at paving it. And so we reached out to the contractor to find out what it would cost to have the remaining two blocks paved, so it doesn't go blacktop, two blocks of gravel, and then blacktop again. The contractor gave us a price of $15,000 to extend that, those two blocks. I checked that pricing with the pricing that we received on the 18th Street Northeast project that we just awarded, as well as our Fourth Street Southeast that was, that was done, well, it's currently ongoing and awarded last year. It is comparable to both of those, those pricing for vertumes and other items, and so we are asking the council to award the project to Knife River North Central in the amount of $15,000, and that would be charged to the Street Improvement Fund.
What is the wish of the council?
I will make a motion to award to Knife River.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Meyer, second by Councilmember Liljigrin. Any discussion?
Greg, aren't there going to be any utilities underneath that road?
Roughly four or five years ago, we extended the sewer and water on that stretch, so we already have the sewer and water underneath there and stubbed out to the parcels already. So we're fortunate that we were ahead of the game on that one.
Good, thank you.
So it's set up for paving.
Any other discussion?
No, just, I mean, she brought it up. I mean, you can give credit to Marv Hoheizl, he's the one who requested the petition to have that put in.
Correct.
That's why it's there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Old Business, Resolution 2023-39, authorize amendment for grade separation with BNSF Railway Memorial Bridge, adopt. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 2023-39 is a request to the bonding bill in the amount of $4.5 million for funding for the grade separation bridge on Drunk Highway 27 here. We are asking the council to authorize that so that we can request to the state for some additional bonding funds for moving that project forward.
Council President, if I may, I did send a message out. We did learn today that we are awarded federal funds through the Federal Rail Administration in a grant of up to $3.2 million. And one of the requirements of that is matching dollars of 20% of those funds towards the project. So this request very much aligns with that, because we have, in the intent in the application, said that our matching dollars would likely be coming from the state bonding funds. So we want to continue with that, and I suspect that when we filed for that grant back in October, that what we have in there for 3.2 million or $4 million isn't going to be enough.
Correct.
We're going to need more than that. So I would leave it, leave the dollar amount where it is and continue moving forward with that application with the state. And now we even have more support backing that, saying that we already have federal hours coming, we're going to match these state dollars against those federal hours. So the money that you're putting into it is, is going to add to the projects that we, the work that we can continue to do, which has been, in the past, one of the biggest question marks that I get when we submit these bonding requests from the state, is where's your matching funds? And now we have them, so that very much benefits us in that process.
What's the wish of the council?
I move to.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-39.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Mr. Council President, so this, I got it straight, we're getting federal funds and state bonding funds?
We're applying for, this resolution is simply applying for state bonding funds, but we did, separate from that, we got a notice of award today that we are in line to get federal grant dollars.
Okay, just one, number seven, thank you.
Mr. President, I actually talked to John last week. I got a call from Mandy Heffron from Fishbox Office, and she was pretty excited for us and said that Congresswoman Fishbox was supporting us for this rail grade separation. And Greg, you remember, we met with.
I do.
Congresswoman Fishbox, and she was very receptive to us and our needs, so I never thought we could match stop her, but hopefully we can.
So far, so good.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Resolution, call roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Conaffla?
Yes.
Glaze?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Carries. Resolution 2023-42, resolution expressing support for proposed tax increment financing, Central Minnesota Housing Partnership, adopt. City Administrator, John.
Thank you, Council President. As we spoke in the work session, this is our resolution supporting the project and utilizing TIF. This will help add to the points that we have, that the CMHP will be putting into their application to the state Minnesota Housing Fund for their project, and there will be some additional, I think, pieces yet to come. We are working, we see in the announcements later, we do have petitions to rezone that property, as well as amend our comprehensive plan to identify the Gideon's Farm as an area that we want to develop housing. And as I said in the work session, our housing study says that we need housing of all kinds. So, you know, the types and varieties of housing aren't going to be just singly focused on affordable housing or multifamily housing in that area. We will look at exploring the developments of all types of housing in that area.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-42.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call roll, please.
Liljigrin?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Conaffla?
Yes.
Glaze?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
New business. Juneteenth holiday, policy 13, holidays amended, adopt.
Thank you, Council President. So we have here personnel policy 13, which is our holidays policy. We're looking to update that to include the Juneteenth holiday. Originally, it was to go into effect August 1st, but the recent legislative session had an omnibus, ominous, thank you, I have such a hard time with that.
Oh, it was quite ominous.
One of those bills in there. To make the holiday effective on June 19th of this year, 2023. So we are looking to amend our personnel policy number 13 in accordance with the new legislation there, making that a holiday.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve policy 13, holidays amended.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion?
Yes, Council President, so just something clear, this is, this is essentially a state holiday.
Federal and state.
Federal and state, yes.
A federal and state holiday, and then the city employees will get rewarded that holiday as well.
Yes.
So we will have a council meeting on the 20th?
Correct.
Correct.
If it's a state and federal holiday, why are we adopting it? Isn't that just automatic, or I don't understand?
Council President, so the, the policy that we have, we identify, we very specifically identify those holidays that we are closing for business and offering pay to employees for those days. So as part of our union negotiations that we had in prior years, Juneteenth was coming as a holiday, and we agreed to in our negotiations with them that once the state adopted it as a holiday statewide, that we would then adopt that as one of our paid holidays.
I understand that. My frustration is more on a state level, but I'm not sure how people are going to celebrate Juneteenth, but that's just my opinion.
I know how I'll celebrate it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Let's make it up. Thanks, Dave.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Memorandums of agreement, unions, adopt. Annie.
Thank you, Council President. So in addition to the personnel policy, we also need to make a MOU to all of our contracts, including the call of Juneteenth being a holiday. Each union is listed there for AFSMI, 49ers, LELS, and the Supervisors Union. We are looking to make those MOUs to that, those contracts.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll move to adopt the memorandums of agreement with the unions.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Position descriptions and updates, points, pay grades, tier structure, streets and parks division, and post-streets and parks superintendent, approve.
Thank you, Council President. So as, as you recall, last fall during our contract negotiations, we discussed opening opportunities for creating value in our employees, allowing for recruiting, improvement, and retention. In order to do that, we have established clear tiers within, we're working on it for each of our departments. The first one that we have completed is the Streets and Parks Department, which comes to you this evening. This creates opportunities for growth that in turn creates value to the employees, or value to the city of the employees. So we have reinstated a previous position that we had, which was the Street and Parks Superintendent. That one will go as the overseeing of the Streets and Parks Department. That'll be within the Supervisors Union. We will also then continue with the Streets and Parks Foreman, that will be on an assignment basis. So if the superintendent is ever out for a long period of time, they would get that foreman in charge pay that they're currently getting now, which will go to a street lead. Street leads, we are looking to implement this. looking to implement this as a new position. These, these employees would be in charge of projects throughout the city. They can be deployed at the will of the superintendent and then be the one that is specifically responsible for those jobs out on the road, making sure that they have everything that they need, making sure the projects are completed, so on and so forth. The most senior people in that position experienced. Equipment Operator Two is our current Heavy Equipment Operator. We're changing that title to be an Equipment Operator Two instead of a Heavy Equipment Operator. We are also then doing the Regular Equipment Operator into an Equipment Operator One. Now, the caveat between these equipment operators is the minimum requirements. So we could have somebody recruiting into the city that has the quote, "Heavy Equipment Operator" minimum requirements right now, but, and they could come in as an Equipment Operator Two. So we can hire somebody that is more experienced, more valuable to the city and bring them in that way. And the same as retaining employees, if they're an Equipment Operator One, they can work their way up and get the experience within our departments to then be qualified to be an Equipment Operator Two and then get paid that extra at the Equipment Operator Two level because they have that experience and that training behind them. So rewarding our employees for the extra licensure, extra trainings that they are obtaining to stay in our employ. Again, then with the Park Maintenance Worker Two, that is going to be a lead position. That will be a, basically a team lead that will be in charge of all the projects. They'll be in charge of making sure that things are completed, making sure that projects are, we're deploying our resources as our Park Maintenance One workers throughout the city. Wherever they're needed, they'll be working with the street lead as well to make sure that projects are being completed on a, in a timely manner. And if the street needs help, park maintenance guys will go there, so on and so forth. With this implementation, job descriptions were updated. We had long, open, honest, transparent conversations with all of the employees currently in the Streets and Parks Department. It is our viewpoint and theirs as well, that trust has been rebuilt through the department. This is something that opened the doors for a lot of conversation. This has been a very big step in order to culturally improve what is happening in the city, making sure that we're all on the same page, making sure that there's no negativity being spread around about anything, really just transparent, open, and honest communication, the, which has solidified our relationship with that department as well and with each other. So then, what we are asking for this evening is for you to approve these new positions and points, grades, job descriptions is the first thing. And then secondary would be to approve the posting of a Streets and Parks Superintendent. We would like to fill these positions from the top down, allowing for movement within the department. Now, not every single one of these positions is necessarily going to be filled. We could be operating with one Equipment Operator Two and three Equipment Operator Ones, or a mixture of the two, or something along those lines. But at this time, we are not currently asking for any, any more positions to be open besides the Streets and Parks Superintendent, so that we can get somebody into leadership and help us fulfill this department and make it strong again.
And, and the Park Maintenance One, which is backfilling-
That'll come later. Yes, and the Park Maintenance, which is backfilling a prior position. So.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to update the position description, points, pay, grades, and tier schedule for the Streets and Parks Division. Oh, and are we approving the post?
And the post, the Street and Park Superintendent?
Superintendent, yes. Right, it's the Park Worker that's coming up separate.
Correct.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Council President, if I may, I'd-
Yes, John.
I would really, I really want to thank Greg and Annie and everyone at the Streets and Parks Department for working with us on this. Yes, it was a hard process. I think we have come to an opportunity to restructure this department in a way that's going to serve the city really well for many years. I do want to say that this is a process that we are working on in other departments. We're very close with Water and Waste. We started conversations with our admin team. We fully intend and have scheduled, even in the future, for other departments as well, like Engineering. It, it gives us that flexibility that we're going to need to recruit in this environment. It is extremely difficult right now for us in other cities to recruit for people with experience. What I, you know, this gives us that opportunity, as well, it gives us an opportunity to recruit for people without experience. And I think that's the, that's the most important part here, too, is that in the past, we've always had positions that were very prescribed in terms of what skillsets they had to have in order to fill that job, because we had the luxury of getting hundreds of applicants at times. Now we don't. And we might find somebody with character and work ethic and, and interests in our community that wants to work into this field and this career, but they don't come with any of these things. And this gives us the, that ability now to bring them into our team, build them up so that they have a path in which they can see for their career, a place that they can, they can grow with us. And as that happens, we've, you know, we extend that to everyone that's even with us today. Now you do have some room to improve. That was one of the things we learned, is that there's just was, we have a lot of sustain, we have a lot of long-term retained employees, but the ones that aren't in those higher level positions, they want to move up, but they can see that's likely not going to happen. This person's going to stay here. They're good at what they do and they want to be here. They're going to stay here for a long time, and there's never going to be an opening for me. And now it does. It creates an opportunity for that. I will say, you know, it's very important that we're not addressing how many very specifically, the number of employees right now. It will be one superintendent, just joking. But in terms of what happens with the street leads, at minimum, we would, we would like to see that at two. It could possibly be three. It's really going to depend on how, like Annie said, that top-down fill occurs. As we fill the superintendent, if that is filled from within, that may warrant a change in the number of, of lead positions that we would, we would be looking at. And, you know, all the way down the line for the rest of the positions, if, you know, you fill one from the top and everything kind of backfills the rest of the way. So I just, I, I don't want that to, to be lost in the conversation. It's definitely a part of our considerations that we're, we have. At this time, you know, like, like we said, we're not, the, basically the foreman is becoming the superintendent, but we're not adding a total number of new positions to this department. It is, you know, filling from within for the vacancy that we have in the foreman, and then next, the vacancy that we have in the Park Maintenance Worker.
I will add that we've seen that, the benefit of allowing the flexibility in the Engineering Department. If you recall, probably about four years ago, we got a very hard time filling our Engineering Tech position that we had open. We modified that to be an Engineering Aid, where there is no requirement to have the, that schooling. And we've been able to, to train within. And we've had success in filling that position twice now with very qualified individuals that know the industry, know the engineering side of it, but they don't necessarily have the computer training background on it that we're able to, to teach them within our organization. So I see this as a, a benefit to getting key quality employees and being able to, to give them a career path to be able to stay for quite a while.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Park Maintenance Worker, post position. Annie?
Uh, thank you. So we don't have a memo for this, but you will remember from the resignation of our previous park worker, we do have a, an opening in that area. We had talked about not filling it. However, further discussion amongst admin staff and the actual department themselves. We have a great need for that. So we are going to fill it. And we're looking that, to be, have approval to post that this evening.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Goscheck, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Airport Commission Recommendation, Resolution 2023-38, Airport Operating and Maintenance Grant Contract 1053286, Minnesota Department of Transportation, adopt. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. Every couple of years, we update the grant agreement with the state of Minnesota for the operation and maintenance of the Little Falls Morrison County Airport. They contribute roughly $30,800 per year for the operation and maintenance of that. That does not include the funding that they supply, as well as the FAA, to the construction projects out there. This is just for the operation and maintenance of it. And so we are asking the council to approve Resolution 2023-38, so we can, can continue to get that, that funding support from the state to own, operate, and maintain the airport at the Little Falls Morrison County Airport.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Meyer, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? Resolution call roll, please.
Meyer?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Glaze?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Lundberg, yes. Little Juggren?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Carries. Resolution 2023-40, declaring certain property surplus and authorizing disposal thereof, adopt. John?
Thank you, Council President. You have before you the, two types of items are cameras from, I believe those are the old squad cameras that we have now that the new Axon squads have arrived and installed and running, as well as two of our older electric rental golf carts that we have replaced with gas fleet. And there has been, or there is interest and they'd be willing to take them to, if we would want to donate them to the zoo as we have done in the past. They, the carts themselves need new batteries, but otherwise they're, they're pretty functional. You know, for us, they would get a lot more use and wear and tear. And I would be concerned about, you know, a 17-year-old golf cart trying to sustain that in our rental fleet when a battery replacement's costing anywhere from $1,000 to $1,200 for one cart. So it makes sense for us to, you know, change that operation out. And if we do so choose, we could get them to the zoo as we have in the past.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-40, declaring certain property surplus and authorizing disposal thereof.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Little Juggren. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution call roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Glaze?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Little Juggren?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Carries. Resolution 2023-37, establishing electronic funds wire transfers, adopt. Hannah?
Thank you, Council President. So every year, the council has to approve a resolution establishing the electronic funds wire transfers and the positions that are designated to make the transfers on behalf of the city. And that is what this resolution is for.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-37, establishing electronic funds wire transfers.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution call roll, please.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Glaze?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goscheck?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Little Juggren?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries. Resolution 2023-41, support of merger, Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, adopt. John?
Thank you, Council President. As you heard in the presentation tonight from Cassie and everyone, the Chamber and Visit Little Falls have been in a long process and discussion about merging their operations and have a plan and recommendation that they've come up with to, to do that. The vote is currently, I think, being tallied for the membership of the Chamber.
It passed.
It has passed. And it, and it's been in their message with this, many stakeholders, the plan that they have is very much favored by their both, boards of both organizations. Where it concerns the city, it ultimately is in the long-term operations and use of the, our lodging and sales tax, as we have a current contract with Visit Little Falls for the, for the use of those funds. And I felt it's of value for the city to, at this point in the process, adopt a resolution pledging or committing the city to negotiating a future contract with them after the, the merger is, is complete and has been, you know, filed and is in place from the Secretary of State's office. So everybody is, is committed and informed. And it's, the expectation is that indeed, the city will move forward with negotiating that contract so that we can continue using those, those lodging and restaurant sales taxes for, you know, the tourism promotion attractions and creating Little Falls as a destination.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-41, support of merger of Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Second. Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Little Juggren. Any discussion?
Yes. I'm in support of the merger. I think it's a good idea. I just don't like locations. The depot over there, to me, is an obliterating area. I don't like the way it looks. There's trains coming by all the time. It's hard to approach it, especially coming from the east. You have to cross the track and immediately turn over there. A lot of people don't like it. It's hard for people from out of town to find that location. And I feel, even if there was a merger, if you kept both places operating, I would be more supportive of that. The Rosenmeier House is something people like to look at. They like, it's, it's nice for tourism. It's in a better location. When we took on the Rosenmeier House years ago, it was for the purpose of using it for Little Falls Convention and Visitor Bureau. We have put upgrades in, into that building even recently. And I, I know what happens when a building sits. We saw the Dewey Iraqi House go down because there was no purpose, and they deteriorate real quick. So it's more of location versus merger. I think that part is a good idea. I just, I'm not in agreement with having both, everything housed under the depot location. And I would like to see if there is a possibility, maybe using both locations with, with the merged organization. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Council President, I kind of disagree with Frank. I like having it over the cash depot and the train station where, I don't think that they need to be paying two different leases, two different rents for the expense of it. And I don't think that you would have a problem with people trying to locate the Chamber or the Tourism Bureau being on that side of the thing. So I kind of disagree with him. I like the idea of them merging together in one place.
Council President, if I may, does the, does the city have a plan for the Rosenmeier House?
So, Council President, in, in talks of this merger, I, the only conversation that I've had so far, and this is by no means any commitment to either of us, but I have talked to Julia Mueller, the Executive Director at Linden Hill, about if this merger does go through, and indeed, they were to move out, would we be able to negotiate or work on a plan that they, the friends of Linden Hill could work to potentially utilize that facility and maintain those grounds? facility and maintain those grounds. We've, we've discussed it in principle. We've both agreed that at this time, we don't want to move that forward with our boards until the merger is complete and indeed, it were to, to happen. So that is one concept and idea. It certainly could be the case that we could open it up and, for proposals, for other uses for that property, as long, so long as they met what, you know, if there are deed restrictions or certain things that, that property was given to the city, we would have to, you know, certainly look into all of those factors. But I would say that I did get one random call from somebody that was interested in potentially operating it as a commercial space. So there is potential interest out there. Do we have a specific plan that we're presenting and recommending at this time? I will often say no, but I think there are plenty of opportunities that we can look into for utilizing that space.
Because I agree with Councilman Goschek, as far as the location of the depot is in a blighted area.
It is.
It's not easy to find, and it is difficult to find the tracks. However, I do understand the ADA regulations, and I, I understand that just the age of the building does not lend itself to what we're trying to accomplish, but it's not a pretty spot. It just isn't. It's a pretty building, but not a pretty spot for Little Falls to be represented that way.
Council President, if I, just may for awareness for everybody, I, very much in this resolution, wrote with no, any sort of commitment or, or, or demand from the city that this is saying we, we support or deny or disagree with the location of their operations. It is just purely on the fact that they're merging, and we agree that we will use our restaurant and lodging tax in our negotiated contract with them in the future. So I'm, I don't, I just want that to be clear. I don't, I didn't intend for this to, by passing the resolutions, we're saying, indeed, we support or don't support moving out of the Rosenmeier House. It's simply the, the structure that we support a merger and negotiating the contract.
Right. And I, I just think we bring it up as a concern.
Mr. President, how long will the depot be usable? Because we're planning on looking at putting a, an overpass right in that location, which is going to change the whole dynamics of that area, which will make it even more difficult to approach the depot area. So maybe we should look to the future a little bit here and think about that, too, instead of just a temporary fix.
Council President, as we've discussed in the past, the expectation is even from the award of planning dollars, which now we, we do have the grant. Once those are, are received and we can start work, it is likely a five-year timeline in terms of planning, design, environmental review, permitting, I believe we'd even have to have with the proximity to the Mississippi River. Then the total, you know, acquiring the dollars for total construction, that's still going to, you know, be a factor that we'll have to consider, and then construction. So best-case scenario, if we get the money and things that we can start next year, because we likely wouldn't even be able to start any of this this year, because we don't have our matching dollars secured. That's 2024. We're looking at 2029.
And five years is a minimum.
And, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to ask you to clarify for anybody that might be listening, watching. I mean, realistically, construction starting ten years, optimistic?
By ten years.
Remember the Crosman Runway?
What's that?
Remember the Crosman Runway? Optimistically, yes. Ten years is probably.
Yeah, minimum five, ten. I, I'd hold some confidence in ten now that we got a grant award.
Yep, I agree.
The, the impact, as you, you mentioned, it will raise the, the roadway, and that would be not accessible. You would not be able to access First Street, I believe that's First Street Northwest.
First Street.
On, from Broadway.
Correct.
You would be able to get there from Lindbergh, and then loop back to the north, I believe First Avenue Northwest.
Correct.
Extends back in there. So in terms of access, that would be one that would be more, not less direct, but it would be a couple block kind of round detour to get back to that location.
Well, basically, we're, we're not really voting on that. We're just voting on whether to support the merger itself. And, and who knows? Yes, Gilbert Depot right now is a, is a good fit for you, but in two, three years, maybe there'll be another place more centrally located in town, or in a different area of town, or whatever, that you can move. It doesn't necessarily mean that because you're moving there now, that you will stay there for eternity, you know? So I think there's options that are available there. But to get us back on track, we're just voting for supporting the merger of those two organizations.
I think I brought it up. And that's why I said I'm in favor of the merger at first.
You're right.
Because I knew this.
I just wanted to move this around so we can get to the vote.
It's, it's just a thing of concern. That's why I brought it up.
That's fine. All right.
And Frank has a point. Frank does have a point. We need to make that neighborhood a priority as far as blight goes. That has nothing to do with the merger.
Okay, so let's get back to the merger. Resolution, call roll, please.
Glaze?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Lil Juggren?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Carries. Submit of Grants Fire and Police Departments Volunteer Fire Assistance Grant Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Wildland Firefighting Gear Authorized. Greg?
Thank you, Council President. The Minnesota DNR has their volunteer fire assistance grant program open now. It's a fifty-fifty match program, up to $10,000 annually. We are proposing to submit a grant in the amount of $9,450 to aid in the purchase of wildland firefighting gear. That gear differs from the other gear that we applied through Sourcewell, that structural turnout gear. This is lighter weight gear that the firefighters, the new firefighters would utilize during wildland firefighting. It's cooler. If awarded, the city's portion would be $4,725. There's funds available in the fire equipment fund for that. So we're just asking for authorization to submit that grant, and then if it's awarded, process all of the proper paperwork to execute it.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the submittal of the grant.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Meyer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Pro Training Simulator Suite Equipment Police Authorized. Police Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have been researching the possibility of acquiring a pro simulator, which would be a virtual reality training system for the police department. This is kind of in our, our long-term, our goals. That being said, I don't have any grants before you, but I'm, I would be requesting authorization that we be allowed to apply for grants, and if we get a positive response, we, I don't have anything specific, that I then bring it back to the council for consideration. So we're just kind of looking to the future and seeing what our options are.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I will make a motion to authorize pro training simulator suite equipment for the police department.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Goschek. Any discussion?
I do have a quick question for the chief. You mentioned that this is something that you've been looking at for some time?
We've been looking at multiple different types of different systems, and this appears to be the one that would fit us the best.
But the question is, you said sometime, so how long have you been looking into this?
Probably a year and a half.
Okay. On the memo, the budgeted no box is checked?
Correct.
And if you've been looking at this, how, how come we haven't been budgeting for it?
We've had other priorities, and this is just for the opportunity to look and see if there's funding available at this point.
Yeah, Council President.
Okay, so this is just a request to submit for grants?
That's it.
That's it, no purchase?
Not to purchase equipment.
Okay. All right. Well, never mind then.
Sorry for the confusion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Announcements. Planning Commission. Upcoming public hearings, June 12th, 2023. First one is to rezone Lot 1, Block 1, Third Edition to Gideon's Farm, and all of Fourth Edition to Gideon's Farm. And the second one is a request to amend the housing section of the comprehensive plan. Do you have any other announcements? Hearing none. Then, we are going to be going into a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota State 113D .05 subdivision 3C to determine the asking price and/or develop or consider offers or counter offers for the potential purchase of real property. This agenda item is to determine the asking price and/or develop or consider offers or counter offers for the potential purchase of real property, PID number 49.1268.000 in the city of Little Falls. This portion of the properly noticed regular meeting of the city council will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Section 13D .05 subdivision 3C.
That's a more full.
And Council President, if I may, we will, we do intend to adjourn the meeting following the reopening of the session without any other action items.
Yes. We got that. Thank you. John?
Are you sure, John?